... which is the process of collecting public comments. And this is one of the more important parts within the laws of the American Constitution. Within eleven, in its section two, paragraph eight, it says, "Constitution has to use the eleven, in its section eleven shall be noticed, as a broad course over the issue time with the opportunity to comment on the proposed proportional plan." In this case, we have several plans that have gone out, and the source of that taken out is the process of collecting comment, especially public comments and public comments. It also says, "The Health Education and Human Services Committee, several of that by six degrees for persons interested to provide comments, comments shall be rewritten and maintained by the Division of Education." So according to this statute, the Division of Education is charged for collecting public important comments. So within each of the reports that you have with you, which is an email address or a current contact has been identified. And so what we hope to do is with all public comment, written comment, chapter resolutions, documents, and services, we only formally start a conference report and package that's given to the committee with a list of all comments and feedback on everyone's proportional plans. What it also says to them, "The Health Education and Human Services Committee, but may, what is not the character of all periods of schools or chapters, committees, or agencies in that category, propose a reportion of the plan. And to the extent the Health Education and Human Services Committee holds hearings, any proposed proportional plan, the Health Education and Human Services Committee may impose restrictive restrictions, including not related to the length of time witnesses may present testimony." So that is the long part of the question, but in short. So I did go through the multiple plans that have been developed and have been set for my HESI to go with and collect comment and feedback. So that's the... And that is whenever it was proposed last week or so, like on February fifteenth or sixteen, the Health Education and Human Services Committee had already regarded these plans and the direction that we got and a few changes that were made to all of them, which is to limit the satellites, is to take all these plans and send them out to the public for public comment and feedback. So that's the instruction that we got from the Department of Education. And the purpose of the law, the Health Education and Human Services Committee is to find out the order of the actions to propose a plan.
I think I changed it. I made changes because it was supposed to take nine. That's why I made changes, I guess.
Akashina, morning. First of all, we're a four to five agency. Ashwath, are we all?
Not four to five, yeah.
I was like, oh shit.
Not other agency? Hadela?
Eastern.
Eastern?
Western.
Western, okay.
Eastern.
Eastern now, okay. Atavatani, please, just for your information, this is the fifth of the final public hearing day there is that's set aside. All week ones, you can start out at Tuva, then to Chinli, to Shiprock, yesterday at Frontpoint, out here to the Forte Fuentes. Oh, that one, uh, it don't, uh, it is too much. In your handout, the, uh, there are six plans. However, four and five are kind of nested in each other with two plans. So that's like two plans added on top of the six. So altogether, we're talking about eight plans. But as I go through, we'll talk about each of these. So the four, the four, if we think about four, Plan Four, think about it as Plan Four, A and B. When we go to five, think about it as Plan Five, A and B. So that's how we distinguish that as we go along. So altogether, we're covering eight plans. Not as thorough as the main plans, as I go through it. So, oh yeah, I thought this was, maybe we'll take a chat about this. Could I ask from the person from another chapter, other agencies, what school? Yeah, yes.
To watch it.
To watch it. What was it? What are the schools represented now from four to five agencies?
Chinji, Chinji.
Oh, Chinji, okay. Okay, let's go ahead and start going through these. Matt mentioned that the HESI meeting that took place out of Tuna Arrows. The main instruction was to keep satellite reservations kind of way separate. Ottawa, not in Forte Fuentes, with all the membership staying at five. So the plan in here says Ottawa, so those three, that's not the case, it shines. They remain at five minutes for Toatchi Lake, Alamo Lake, and Raymon. So I have a director in there. Ottawa, of course, the main director is to go out of public hearings, cover the plans that have been prepared. Okay, so Plan Number One here, let's go ahead and we'll go to page five. These are kind of numbered differently per week section. So some of them don't have page numbers, but this particular page has numbers for us. So four to five, he has twelve boards, as it is, twelve tools, twelve boards. Plan A, I'm sorry, Plan One retains all the sixty-three boards. And then the numbers, he has to go from either from three to seven board members. So it's quite dimensional. So you can have three board members, four, five, six, seven board members for Plan Number One. Ottawa maintains the sixty-three boards. So four to five, Pine Springs would have three members, one from Halk, Luton, and Nahati. Ottawa, number two, Saibada, would have three members, two from Tito, one from Delcon. Hunter's Point would have four members, one from Forte Fuentes, two from St. Michael's, one in Whiteville, one from Arctic City. Ottawa, Jay, Jay, Alamo. Elementary would have three members, two from Whipplewell, one from Little Island. Crystal Boarding School would have three members, two from Red Rock, one from Crystal. White Rooms Community School with three members, one from White Village, one from Blackville, one from Delcon. Kinna Fachi, all have four members, one from that chapter. Lots are two from Kitchin.
You will need to own.
Kitchin, one from Cornfield, one from Delcon, Community School, four members. Two from Delcon, one from Wells, one from Eastwood. Grieswood Community School, four members, two from Grieswood, one from Stevo, one from Westside. Joshai would have four board members, one from Toatchi, or one each from Toatchi, Twin Lakes, Nash City, and Mexican Springs. Ottawa, seven?
It's Isiyakim.
It's Isiyakim, okay. Isiyakim, Resident Chaval, with three members, would have one each from Delcon, Whitecomb, and Little Island. Ottawa, the twelfth school, Yeyay, Winslow Residential, would have three members, one each from Bird Springs, Delcon, Tito. So the remainder of the plans, the way this is set up, it's all set up like this. So part of the reason is that the HESI company prefers a standard setup. So when they decide to select a plan from here, they will then market with exhibit A or something and pass it with this legislation. A legislation, you're not doing it, you're not doing it. That will be the plan then selected to be used for the upcoming election. So that's the process, part of the process that I thought I'd mention while we're adding that. So that was Plan Number One. Yes, sir?
Yes, in the beginning, you should still mention that it was based off the school's population enrollment. Is this taking consideration enrollment at schools right now? Is there a guideline, if you have four students, you should have this number? If you have one hundred and fifty, you should have this number? Have you noticed anything like that? Is there many like that?
And these particular plans were, first of all, the, uh, the database that we use to set all this up was from the N A S I S.
NACIS.
NACIS, okay. The data came from there, and it's an average of the last three years of enrollment. So three last years, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it takes in those numbers. In the, well, in the process of doing these plans, we went through, I took it too, went through quite a bit of analysis in terms of setting up these numbers. So for example, Plan Number One is based on, is based on, for three members, it's one hundred and forty-nine or less. One hundred and fifty students to two hundred, ninety-nine students, four members. Three hundred to four hundred, forty-nine, five members. Four hundred and fifty to five ninety-nine, six members. Six hundred and over, seven members. So it's based on numbers like that, yes?
Can we get a copy of that written down of those numbers? And just red working it that way?
If we can make copies of this, I'm not sure. You're welcome to pass this around if you'd like. I have just one copy to refer to online. But we were then instructed by HESI to make it very consistent, quote. That's why they're all, they're set up exactly the same format in here. If you would like, what I could probably do is share it with you through the internet. If you can give me your email address, I could furnish the same, based on this, of all these numbers, and then fix it to this format. So.
Public comment period, when does that close? I know the chapters haven't had their march meetings, the school boards haven't had their reading yet.
Well, right now, the public comment period is open. And it's like a public comment, there's also written comments. So that comment period, at least when I read the statute, the basis says it's not less than sixty days. So there's plenty of time left.
So that's sixty days starting on Monday?
We assume that the start of the day, HESI says, go out and have public hearings when they look at these six plans and say, it's taken from the public.
The one arrow is meaning?
Yes, that the clocks are ticking from then. So I don't know how long sixty days are after.
Okay, so the comment, I have another question. Are you taking questions on individual schools or not? So like on number eleven, I want to know why they're taking place instead of Greyswood.
Instead of which one?
On number eleven, there's one kid from Greyswood, Isiyakim. I don't know if there's any kids from Little Island.
Actually, when we look at the data for that, because the school, they have a size of one that comes out of Chinli Agency. In particular, Chinli, Many Farms, Little Island. There's a, we actually looked at the data, so from what I recall, all of them, Isiyakim, they actually had a large number than they have in Chinli Agency for those three chapters. But the one that was identified with the most was Little Island.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, again, even though, even though Little Island is another agency, a lot of this is just basically the numbers that are according to all the schools. Yes.
Got a very big age, can't complain, you're a teenager. I'm just an Alamo citizen, I don't have a title, and I'm interested in what the Navajo Nation is doing about the school situation. And I'm talking about all schools. There are big, big, big problems in all our schools. And one thing that I really wanted to know, I saw your view on the statutes or whatever, it would have been nice if you provided us copies of that, because most likely I'll look back to the chapter and tell them, this is what's going on, what do you say? So anyway, I'm Kyamani and Pritini and Ashishchi. I do vote in Sommel chapter. And I do favor four and six. Tell you right now, I've been missing a little bit while, it's simply because it has Sommel on it. And you know that our people move around. We have a lot of different citizens in each of our communities voting places. Oh, Kanzi, it's not just Sommel anymore, Sommel residents. I know some of our residents are living California, Alaska, native, the Naxna. Some of us prefer to stay here. And I'm concerned because I have not attended any of your readings. This is the only one that's really close to home. And I know you had readings all over the place in near Blackstone and whatnot, but some of us don't have the money to travel that far. And I am a retired school teacher, I taught school for thirty-eight years, from kindergarten to ninth grade, I went up the ladder because I wanted to know what skills were introduced at each level. So that's the way I have planned my career. And what is the real purpose? What is your goal for reportionment? To me, like some people say, there's too many chiefs and not enough minions. And I read the paper, I read everything that is available, and I know there's a lot of problems with school boards all over. This use of funds, number one, that's a concern to me. Because the money needs to go to the children, the money needs to go to the classroom. They're the ones that are upfront. Ottawa, data, how many, how familiar are you with data? I know that a lot of our schools are failing, folk hall failing. But in my view as a teacher, the teachers are failing. In my view, teachers are not failing. Maybe I have a hundred or two that need help, that need a colleague to help them, you know, overcome their deficiencies. Because that's the way I look at it. So for me, I favor four and six. And then our chapters are in groups now. And why wasn't that part of the plan? To me, I think the less, the less cut down at the top, the better it is for schools. I don't know how much money the whole program costs for school boards. I would like to know, what is the total cost of all these school boards? Yes, some of them probably are efficient, some of them are not, they're just there, you know. So those are the concerns that I have about the school boards. And I would like to see really less, less school board members. Perhaps put them in regions like the Navajo Nation chapters, they're in regions. And I like that. But when the Navajo Nation cut down their delegates, what happens? They have, each one of them has legislative aid at each chapter. So probably the money we thought we were saving, they just dealt with it a different way. So actually, we're not saving money. So anyway, those are my concerns, I like four and six because it has Sommel on the map. Sommel is Ottawa, Chinli, they're just all over. This school expelled them, what do they do? They go to a different school. They get in trouble in that school, they go to a new school. What about that? What about that? And so I don't know if you guys like the puppy schools, they have a certain date where they count all their students. Doesn't Navajo Nation do that? Do they count their students at a certain time in the year or two for the money that comes in from different sources? And I'm hoping, I'm hoping you're recording all these sessions so that way you can go back and listen and, you know, print out an document and say, well, we don't want that whole class. So my main concern is, how much money is all this costing to us?
Excuse me, Matt?
And then also, what is the real reason?
Your teacher, yeah.
This is my five minutes and I don't care what I want. But we've done a whole.
As a matter of procedure, maybe Mr. So needs to clarify that. We like to go through these plans. And then if you have a comment to make, just like you did, sign right here and then you make your comment. Then you can make your preference of which one you prefer, like you mentioned. So that's good. And please try and stick to the subject of this reportion, please. We know that there are a lot of issues. But we're not here to, you know, to fix the world today. We're here to just address the issue of reportionment. You did ask what the intent of the four it is. Repportionment occurs for Navajo Nation, not for delegates, just like the US Congress, every ten years. Apparently, according to the law, the reportionment for school boards occurs every four years, starting in two thousand and three. So it starts to quickly change every four years, but not that. And ten, in the last eight years, four years ago, they just went with that. So just accept what it was, they didn't change it. So eight years ago, we haven't talked about it, eight, 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 I'm not sure. So now it's eight years later, it's time to go through and consider. And again, these are just options, it's like putting options on a table and getting your feedback to see which one you would revert. So just like you did, you said four and six. So in the way we tally up, and she looked out, but I think it'd be fair that, you know, go ahead and sign back in, and then we can take it from there. So let's, so let's begin, it's done. Sign up up here, and then we'll go by that. But please let's go through the plans first. Because oftentimes, one of the plans might be addressing what you're thinking about. Thank you very much. Definitely sign because we are recording the comments, and we will, we're having this. The record, all gets written, it's part of the record, it goes to the committee. And I think one of the questions you asked is how does it cost? Well, in particular, for grant school, for grant schools, I'll answer one of the questions that you asked. On that mission, there are two hundred and seventy-five school board members all across Canada, whether they're beigat grant school, beigat schools, grant schools, or contract school. And out of sixty-three, there are a total of two hundred and seventy-five school board members. And one of the questions that you asked is what does school board cost? If all school boards follow the Navajo Nation's second policy, they're allocated two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, up to a maximum of twelve meetings. And then they also allocated one hundred and fifty dollars plus six times six for special board meetings. So the numbers on that is going to be three hundred and fifty dollars. For grant schools, they're also allocated one WSU for additional travel and training conferences, meetings, and so on. And I believe the WSU figure that we got is roughly about fifty-five dollars. So the amount for the grant school, if they follow bare minimum, this would be about ninety-seven hundred dollars. So when you do the math, it does add up. So you did ask a very important question about how does school board cost? But if you want, I, we can probably give you the numbers later. Thank you. But yeah, your comments are right, and we appreciate your comment. We should have put it in the part of the public comment. But again, the public comment, we have a half hour. Okay, Ken, we covered Plan One. Let's go ahead and go on to Plan Two. Overall, among the eight plans, okay, number two, number three, four B, five B, and six. Those are kind of like consolidated plans, not consolidated, combined. Combined boards to overlook more than one school in some cases. And two, and three, isolation factor is taken into consideration. So the schools are kind of pulled out low now. And again, one, for example, this Trisca Boarding School, it's off on its own. There's not another school nearby for another board to be overlooked, so it stays with that one board. But, you know, we'll clarify it as we go along. But Plan Two, again, is one of those plans where their boards are kind of planned for consolidation. So altogether, currently, there are sixty-three boards out. Plan Two and Three would combine boards. So it ends up to be forty-three boards overlooking the sixty-three schools. And some in combination, so. So we go to Plan Two. Four to five is, this particular section is on page number. So prior, again, I had twelve schools, now it's four, it's combined, it gets, not, twelve schools remain twelve schools. Boards, A and B, instead of twelve boards, now it's nine under this plan. So Pine Springs, because it's kind of isolated, stays by itself, with four members. And the board seats on this one for Plan, this particular Plan, I'm sorry. Plan Two starts at four, five, six, and seven. Those are your optional numbers, not optional numbers, based on school enrollment. So Pine School would have four members, two from Halk, one from Luton, one from Nahati. Saibada, Saibada, Boarding School, four members, two Tito, one Delcon, one at large, Delcon, and one Wells. Hunter's Point would have four members, one four to five, two St. Michael's, one at large, Luton, Book Springs. Crystal Boarding School, four members, two Crystal, two Red Rock. White Rooms Boarding School, two White Rooms, one Black, one Nahati. Kinna Fachi, four members, two Cornfields, and one Ganado. Delcon, number seven, Delcon, with Grieswood overlooked by one board of six members. Two Delcon, two Grieswood, one Stevo, one Whitecomb. Number eight, Joshai, four members, one each with Toatchi, Basta, Nash City, and Mexican Springs. Ottawa, number nine, Isiyakim, with Winslow, with Kinmoney, overlooked by six board members. One each for Delcon, Whitecomb, Tito, Bird Springs, Timber City, and Chinli. So as you can see, the dynamics of it quite change in terms of when the school boards are combined. In some cases, the board members, the board seat increases. And in some cases, it remains the same, especially those that are isolated and remain on their own. Okay, so that is Plan Two.
So JP's, I'm sorry? JP's, I?
JP's I is Chinli. It's Chinli, it was part of that group.
So Plan One, you have JP's I for the plans. Plan Two, you have Chinli?
Oh, I'm sorry. Again, let's backtrack, let's go, if you go to Chinli Agency Plan, this is the one that combines Conaway with Jep's Up School. So it's another one with two representatives from Whipplewell, one from South Valley Conaway, and one is representative from Tachin, and one from Long Island. So the way that this is configured is to put that group of the schools in the agency that seems to have more students. So even though Jep's Up is in four to five, it's identifying Plan Two as being with Conaway and Jep's Up with this school board configuration. Okay, let's go back to my rooms. Number two, Plan Two? White Rooms has four board members, two from White Rooms, one from Black, one from Nahati. Did you get your question answered on one? Ashwath, I'm there. The gentleman there?
Oh, yeah, I said essential on Plan Two.
Okay, all right. Akashina, let's go on to Plan Three. Plan Three is quite similar to Plan Two. In Plan Two, membership is from four, 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 five, six, and seven out. And in Plan Three, it's only for four and five. So four and five, it's kind of a popular number, popular numbers to look at a lot of things because a lot of the input that was perceived, up perceived, that perceived, after drafting up these plans was that a lot of people would be for retaining the same numbers, four and five. And that was part of the rationale. So Plan Two, make another one, but only with two, four and five. So, so Plan Two, again, make another one, but only with two, two, uh, four and five, and that was the recommendation that's obviously this came on, so. Uh, but a lot of it remains the same, so, uh, for Plan Three, uh, Pine Springs, Seibadakai, Hunter's Point, Crystal, White Rooms, uh, uh, Kinthasachi, those remain the same. And I think, uh, the one for Delcon, Greyswood, A, A, from before, A, 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 it's, uh, six member session, and A, you can hear it's, here it's five. Uh, so that, that six got forced to five, that's only four and five, so, so lots of changes. Chisga remained the same, uh, number nine, T-Sacin, Winslow, uh, Kinlani, that also was six in the out of nine, two, yeah. Uh, so A, A, got forced back down to five. So three, two, two and three pretty much are the same. Uh, let's go ahead and go to Plan Four. Uh, these are numbers, so it's on page, uh, hmm, uh, page eight, page eight, now, now, Jep?
And just to help put some background on this particular plan, it also uses numbers of schools that attend the school. Plan Four, it, it, what we use is what's called a composition guide, so many of what Mr. Rogers had identified in some of the other plans. In this case, if your school is up to 399 students, it's a four-member board. And if it's 400 students, five, on up, it's an five-member board. And that's also the purpose for the, the next one in four B, it's, it's still, and that's the combined schools by order. In four B, it uses the same exact numbers for, for some of the schools that have been combined. But four A is kind of the existing school boards as is for all 63 boards. Plan Four B is more the combined, combined schools plan.
So the introductory play, page four, Plan Four, yeah, page one, okay. Uh, it does sort of break down enrollment, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, 399 students, 100 A, four board members, 400 over A, five board members. And for the, that, that's the other breakdown there. Uh, I'll, I'll explain the, uh, front, uh, side of the, uh, so, uh, so. So Plan Four, it remembers in two parts, yeah. So the first part, A, A, is, is, uh, representing, again, keeping as is the 12 schools with 12 boards. But this, these will only have numbers of, of four. But it just happens that for the Forty Five schools, all these schools, as you look down the road quickly, every school has four members. Because of the school, the school size, even, uh, so, uh, Pine Springs with four members, two from Hau, two, uh, one each from, uh, Lauten, not, not Atatsi. Out of Seibadakai, A, A, all four members from that community, uh, or T-Stow chapter area. Hunter's Point with four members, one from Forty Five, uh, two from Saint Michael's, one at large for Oak Springs, Lauten, Kinth, and Savan. Out of JP's, uh, Elementary School, four, four members, two, two for Whupper Will, one at large for Loma and, uh... That should be two, two. Two at large for Loma and, and chapters. Uh, number five, Crystal with four members, three from that chapter, along with Red Lake, and then one from Crystal. Out of White Rooms, Community School, two from White Rooms, one from Plaketo, one at large for Twin Hau and Atatsi. Out of numbers Sherri, uh, Kinthasachi, four board members, three, uh, from that chapter, and then one at large for Cornfields and now. Uh, Delcon Community, four board members, three from Delcon, one at large for Indian Wells, T-Stow, Jedito and Whitecon. Greyswood Community, A, A, four members, three from Greyswood Springs, one at large between Whitecon and Indian Wells, one at large with Steveboat, Cornfields and out of chapter. Uh, Chisga, four members, one each from Toachi, uh, Twin Lakes, one at large for Nash City, Mexican Springs, one at large for Kaili, Ken, Crystal, Forty Five and Rock Springs. Out of East Yakken, uh, Residential Hall, four members, one at large for Delcon, T-Stow, Indian Wells, one at large for Greyswood Springs, Hau, Daktasi, one at large for Jedito, Whitecon, one at large for Chinli, of the academy. Out of class number 12, Winslow Residential Hall, four members, uh, Sidi Told, Sidi Told, uh, Birch Springs, Chapter 11, one at large Delcon, Luke, one at large Hau, Atatsi, Whitecon chapters and one T-Stow. So A, A, uh, uh, four A, four A is the most, the most as is right now. Uh, because I mean, uh, that is the closest to the plan that exists right now. Status quo, whatever it could be called, that's what, what it is, so it's about closest to what we already have now. So a lot of people have been saying, you know how change keep it away there? This is the one. So this is four A, four A. So when you make your comments, when you make your comments, uh, because, uh, uh, just, just, just from a, a, an outsider's viewpoint, yeah. I, I, I like the status quo myself too. The, um, the, the Plan, Plan One, it is most representative of your students. Because it represents a student, the lower schools up to, up to seven. So schools like Fort One Gate and Timber City, why are they shortchanged with, with lower board number members? When, when the law says, it covers from three to seven. So all that's doing is Plan Number One, it goes to put the law says from three to seven members, A, Plan Number One. So where at Plan Number Four, four A is pretty much as is. Now, four B, which is the next page on page 11, uh, starts to consolidate, um, boards, uh. So instead of having, uh, eight? Oh, I'm sorry. So, 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 okay, so as if you have 12 schools, 12 boards, yeah. Eight, four A. Now, four B reduces the boards from nine to, I mean, 12 to nine. So eight page 10. That actually reduces it to eight, so from 12 boards to, to eight, of course, so it combines that. Uh, Pine Springs remains the same. Number two, uh, Seibadakai and, uh, Delcon are put together to be overlooked by one board of four members. Two for Delcon, one for T-Stow, one at large for Indian Wells, T-Stow, Jedito. Uh, Hunter's Point remains by itself, configuration of representation is still the same. Uh, uh, Crystal remains on its own, yeah. Uh, Greyswood, White Room schools are, are put together with one board of five members for representing each Greyswood, Cornfields, Plaketo, White Rooms and one at large for Steveboat and White, Whitecon. A, number five, again, number six, Kinthasachi is by itself. Chisga, as we mentioned, kind of isolated by itself. Out of, uh, East Yakken, Winslow's school board, A, A, is becoming one board, uh, with five members. Uh, Whitelet at large for each of those, one at large for Delcon, T-Stow, Indian Wells, one at large for Greyswood Springs, uh, Hau, Hauback, I'm sorry, Hau, Chapp and now Hauback, Hauback is Shabba. Uh, one at large for Jedito, Whitecon, one for Luke and Birch Springs put together, one at large for Chinli, Lookat's Guy and New Corns chapters. So it, uh, so, so that is, uh, five B. Four B, I'm sorry, can't say the correction, four B. Well, let's go ahead and go on to five, yeah. Now, four, Plan Four, it had members of four and five. Uh, Plan, Plan Five, A, A, on the introductory page, uh, but student enrollment of 250, uh, or less would have three board members. 151 to 400 would have four members, 400 and above would have five members. So the main difference between four and five is that this one has more options for more board members, yeah. Um, so A, A, that, that's the difference. Of course, so we go to Forty Five. Forty Five, uh, uh, with the 12 schools, uh, you would have Pine Springs, still with three members, two from Hau, one at large for Lauten, Atatsi, two, six, Seibadakai, all three members from T-Stow. Hunter's Point, one for four, one at large for Saint Michael's, Saint Michael's and Kilthasachi. One at large for Lauten, Oak Springs, Savan. JP's I, Almar, two from Whupper Will and one from, one at large for Loma and Chinli. Crystal, three members, two Red Lake, one Crystal, one Sherri, Savan, Savan. Uh, White Rooms would have two from White Room's chapter, one at large for Hau, Plaketo, not Atatsi. Uh, Kinthasachi, two from that community and one at large for Cornfields and, uh, Delcon, three members, three Delcon, one at large for Indian Wells, T-Stow, Whitecon. Uh, number nine, Greyswood Community School, uh, one from Greyswood, one at large with, uh, uh, Steveboat and Whitecon, one at large for Cornfields, Plaketo. Chisga Boarding School, uh, again, basically set up the same way by itself. Toachi would have one, uh, Basa would have one, one at large with, uh, Kaili, Ken and Nash City, Nash City, but just three members this time. Uh, East Yakken, uh, three members, one at large for Delcon, T-Stow, Indian Wells, Atatsi, one at large for Greyswood, Springs, uh, Jedito, Whitecon chapters, one at large for Chinli, of the academy. Uh, Winslow Residential Garden, one at large for Birch Springs, one at large with, uh, I'm sorry, one at large with, uh, first one with Birch Springs and Luke, one at large also for Delcon, Whitecon and one solely from, uh, T-Stow chapter. So when you look at, you set up on Plan Five. So as you probably are noticing, uh, some of these plans almost resemble each other. Out of A, 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 there are variations, uh, between certain ones of them. If, if there's a change, if there's an opportunity to have, uh, three sets of board sizes, then that makes a difference over verse two. Uh, for example, uh, of, of the Plan Four, it has four and five board members currently. Out of that one, so that one had 12 schools, 12 boards. Uh, in five B, which is on page nine, uh, reduces it to, uh, nine, nine boards. Uh, Pine Springs remains the same, uh, Seibadakai is then combined with, uh, Delcon with four board members, two Delcon, one T-Stow, one at large for Indian Wells and, uh, T-Stow, Jedito, White, Whitecon chapters. Hunter's Point still by itself, Crystal still by itself, Greyswood, uh, combined with, uh, White Rooms with five board members, one each. Greyswood, Cornfields, Plaketo, White Rooms, one at large for Steveboat, White, uh, Whitecon. Uh, Kinthasachi off by itself, uh, Chisga Community School off by itself. And then nine, combined, combination of East Yakken, Winslow's school board, uh, put together. Uh, one at large each, uh, for Delcon, T-Stow, Indian Wells, one at large Greyswood, Hau, Jedito, Whitecon. One each Luke, Birch Springs, one at large Chinli, Lookat's Guy and New Corns. Uh, they're not, uh, they, uh, they're at large for, uh, well. So the five B is, yeah, this one? Oh, no, one by itself. Um, I'm sorry, uh, when I, when I mentioned by itself, yeah, Chisga, A, A, but in some cases, because they're isolated, you like Toachi or Chisga, or two Chisga schools is, uh, the other school, that, they, they, they're still, still, kids and chiefs like that too. But if there are schools that are closer together, um, uh, Pine, Pine Springs, for example, is pretty much off on its own, uh, uh. But Delcon and Seib, uh, Delcon and Seibadakai are kind of like down the road, so to speak, of what A, A, did. One board, today's being, uh, that's, that's always combined. Uh, no, no, in terms of representation, yeah, for the, for the, for the board members come from, it, it's still quite similar. So even though it's only a safe by itself, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to use that term, but I didn't want that misunderstood, but, uh, um, by, yeah, uh, Hunter's Point, for example, yeah, um, in the, in the plan that is either five A or five B, uh, it remains the same. Where the representation, one Delcon or Forty Five, one at large between Saint Michael's and Chin, uh, Kilthasachi, and then one at large, uh, Lauten and Oak Springs. But under five B, it got three members, but under, un, under five A, uh, it's still three members. But remember at four, A, it's got four members, yeah, so that's the difference of, so, so each plan is different because of that. So you have to make a hundred, you know, wondering which one will be suitable for your area of...
And I think a few, we had some people say they liked Plan Four, but they also indicated that we're a small school and we voluntarily liked how our number reduced to three. So even though in the four plan, at least like two or three school was kind of indicated that we want numbers of three, so that's, I guess that's kind of their fault. So even though we have like a four to five, which is Plan Four, uh, some, some schools said we, we kind of prefer to increase that three. So Plan Five, to recap, is a three, four, five school configuration, and that's based on the numbers.
Okay, uh, we're down to the last one, Plan Six, yeah? Yes?
Okay, what were you thinking, number six?
I noticed that.
What number is that?
My number six, uh, I don't know, I don't, uh, I don't understand. Okay, number one, uh, the depth is the same, or I think the depth is the same, that we, we hold Lauten, we also, I mean, the speed of the same, that we, Oak Springs, T-Sac, two of, uh, I think, and, and one, two, three, Lauten and Oak Springs, the car, uh, so, so. So this one, I mean, I guess, I said, I said, I don't know, uh, I noticed that. I heard four, five, like a few, uh, chapters. This is kind of huge, you know, so, I don't know, it's kind of, it's a little bit, but I'm just saying that if you don't make two,
I, I think we made the public comment, we'll, we'll note it as part of the, the plans, the product re-visit, even, even address it to, because that, well, the next set of plans, a lot of the common, and if there are any suggestions on good plans, can you read that? But we, that, in that, that's why we have a public comment and also written a comment. And to sort, sort of go back to what we had mentioned before. A lot of these plans are driven, well, all these plans are driven primarily by, by numbers, numbers that your schools have recorded. So the kind of preface, a lot of simple apportionment plan, is that the plan that we have right now for two thousand sixteen is also the same plan that was approved back in two thousand twelve. And so that, if you notice, there's a lot of fluctuation in populations at everyone in the schools. So what these plans at least try to represent or reflect are the changes in population of students that have come from some of, some of these different chapters. Some chapters have gone up, others have gone down. And there are a couple of schools that have, there are apportion plans that have chapters that have been marked up because there's zero, almost no students coming out of that chapter. So that, that's, so if you do see changes in chapters, that's pri, that's primarily because not enough students or no kids came, came out of this chapter. I mean, maybe four years ago, eight years ago, there used to be kids that came out of that chapter that went to the school, but based on the data, the numbers have changed, so. I mean, then this is what the process of, of apportionment is, is trying to adjust those numbers based on what the law requires.
And there have been some changes, though, if you look at the data we have. Uh, that, you, we, the, the data that we looked at shows where the students are coming from for the three-year period, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So for each of those years, for each school, it breaks down the chapters, how many students are coming from there. Second year of that, it might change a little bit, it might pick back up on the third year, D, not E. Uh, one of the problems that we experienced is that there's a lot of blanks, uh, blank meaning. Um, chapter affiliation is not reported by the school. There is one, 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 one community, one school in the Eastern that has seventy-two percent blank. Seventy-two percent blank, you can't identify that many of the students what chapter affiliated. It's a real problem. And then, and then somebody at a public hearing, yes.